I call to order the committee of the whole meeting of the Birmingham City Council. Good afternoon, councilors. We'll note attending are Councilor Woods, Councilor Hunter Williams, Councilor Pro Tim Smithman, Councilor Abbott, and Councilor Moore. And we do have a quorum available. At this time, councilors, I'd like to ask for approval of the minutes. We have attached for your review the minutes of April 20th, 2022, and the minutes of March 28th, 2022. Do I have a motion and a second for approval of those minutes?
I have approval of the minutes with the directions of the typos, and I have marked the typos on this. It does not change the content or meaning.
My typos?
It just makes it read a little.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second. All right. Any questions regarding the items being moved to properly second? We will approve those minutes of March 28th and April 20th, and we will make note of any typographical errors and be sure those are noted before filing. All right. Thank you, councilors. At this time, our agenda item for this afternoon's meeting includes an update on our disparity study, and so we'll have Mr. Coriate Hauser, Deputy Director of IEO, that will introduce our speaker and give us more information about the study. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, council. One thank you for your patience. I apologize for that, but I'm going to go straight to Mr. Rodney Strong for the presentation. He is the founder and CEO of Griffin &amp; Strong. So, Mr. Rodney Strong, you can come on up, and you guys all have a copy of the presentation that he'll be presenting today, so you should be able to follow along. And then there's a moment for question and answers at the end of that as well.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mrs. Strong. We're very happy to have you here in Birmingham. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam President and members of the council. Thank you all so much for your patience. I apologize for being detained. Unfortunately, the traffic out of Atlanta was horrendous. Should have probably given it more time. But we've completed this, so I think, a significant study. I've had an opportunity to know many of the elected officials and work with people on various issues associated with minority and women business enterprise development in Birmingham for many, many years, going all the way back to the Arrington administration when the Croson decision was first decided 30 years ago. I had a chance to be part of the legal team that worked on issues and had discussions with the attorneys for the city of Birmingham. And I've always felt that Birmingham had an opportunity to do some things that were significant, and I'm just so pleased that this administration has chosen to do a comprehensive disparity study, and I'd just like to spend a few minutes and just go over the results of that study with you. Let's see. I have a clipper. I've got the presentation. I just didn't know if I had a... Oh, who's going to just tell you to advance? Okay. All right. So, if we'll just go to that first slide? Okay. And for those of you all who are very familiar with disparity studies, minority women business development, I hope I'm not going to be too simplistic, but I feel like it's important for elected officials to be aware of sort of the legal parameters, what we're dealing with, and I just want to spend just a minute talking about the legal basis for the study and what we're doing, why we're doing it. And of course, this whole area is dictated by a Supreme Court decision. It's on your screen, and I think you all have the presentation called "The City of Richmond versus J.A. Croson." And that decision was decided in 1989. And, you know, February 1989, the decision came down, and ever since then, it has been a major part of my life. I was Director of the Office of Contract Compliance for the City of Atlanta at the time the decision came down and was involved in crafting Atlanta's response to that study, I mean, excuse me, to that decision, and we ended up conducting a study. And then about six years later, the personnel of the Supreme Court changed, and there was another case that's very significant, Supreme Court decision. It's called Adiran Constructors versus Pena. Came out in 1995. And the difference in those two cases is that the original case, the Croson case, said that state and local governments had to apply certain legal standards under the Constitution in order to have programs that benefited minorities and women or that dealt with the present effects of past discrimination, but that it did not apply to the federal government, that the federal government had plenary power or absolute power when it came to enforcing the Fourteenth Amendment. When the personnel of the Supreme Court changed, that was a new decision that came out that basically required the federal government to adhere to the same standards that state and local governments adhere to, and so that's what this Adiran Constructors case is all about. So, I think it's important to think about two factors. Prior to the Croson decision, I think the general consensus was that there was a level of constitutional scrutiny that was allowed that gave deference to the government to say, "Hey, we know that there's been discrimination in the marketplace." I mean, can you imagine a place more iconic in terms of having a history of discrimination than Birmingham, Alabama? You know, a city that was the heart of the civil rights movement, that the Birmingham campaign that basically was the key to the passage of the 1964 Civil Rights Act, not far from Selma, that was the key to the passage of the Voting Rights Act. And yet, in discussions around this case, the court said, "No, no, no. Anytime you implicate race or gender, well, particularly race, anytime under the Fourteenth Amendment, you have to meet a legal standard of strict scrutiny, which is the highest standard." And lawyers used to say, "Strict in theory, fatal in fact," because oftentimes, if you implicated race, it was going to be kicked out as unconstitutional. But in this case, we looked at it and said, "Well, there are certain things that clearly can be demonstrated as being discriminatory." And so, you have to do two things. A government has to show a factual basis and evidence, and that's what a disparity study is designed to do, make a determination as to whether there's a factual basis and evidence. And then it has to use a methodology in terms of making that determination that's dictated by the case law. And then, if you determine that there is either discrimination in the marketplace or the present effects of past discrimination, in other words, if you can show that minority and women-owned businesses have had the impact of discrimination in the past that impacts their ability to do business today, then those two things are going to have an impact on whether or not you have a basis to have a program. And then, the... Once you make those determinations, and there have been numerous lower court decisions subsequent to these two cases that I have cited and on your board, those cases sort of have refined over the last 30 years the parameters of what the courts look at as being sufficient evidence. You know, there are a number of different factors, and we'll get into a little bit of that later on. And so then, the idea is that if you determine, as a government, the city of Birmingham, make a determination that there is a basis for having a program that implicates race in terms of remedying or ameliorating some of the present effects of past discrimination or dealing with the effects of discrimination that has been identified in your marketplace, then any remedy that you come up with has to be narrowly tailored, which is just a legal term of art that means that you have to use the least possible to try to address any discrimination that you've determined impacts your contracting and procurement process. And so, obviously, you look at what types of race-neutral measures, you know, bonding assistance, financial assistance, technical assistance, forecasting, other kinds of mechanisms that are not implicating race or gender, that are neutral on their face. Obviously, that's the first step. And then, to the extent that it's necessary, you can make a determination that you need to have a preference or a benefit based on race or gender. If we can go to that next slide. So, for this study, we looked at a five-year period, 2015, 2019, and then we broke all of your contracting down into these categories: construction, architecture and engineering, professional services, other services, and goods. And we made a determination as to what your relevant market is. And that just means, looking at your current spending, where do the vendors that you bought from live, or where are their firms based? And so, we determined that 75% of the dollars were spent in a relevant market that basically includes Jefferson County and Shelby County, Alabama. So, we determined that that was the relevant market, and that's significant because in the Croson case, Justice O'Connor was critical of the city of Richmond, which was sued in that particular case, because she said that they gave their preference widely without regard to where the companies were based, whether or not they had experienced discrimination in the individual marketplace. And so, the determination was made for a methodological reasons that it was important to determine where the relevant market was. So, we made that determination. So then, using the relevant market for your disparity study, once we made that determination, then we made a determination about the disparity, MWE disparity by industry category. So, if we can go to this next slide? All right. So, MWE disparity by industry category in the relevant market, now to be Shelby County and Jefferson County, Jefferson County and Shelby County. Obviously, Jefferson being the county that Birmingham is in, Shelby County adjacent to you, and a lot of activity happening, business activity happens in that particular county. And so, the... We showed a total dollars that were spent in construction. This is a prime disparity. This is looking at prime dollars, prime construction dollars. It's looking at it for the study period, 2015 through 2019. It breaks it down based on ethnicity and gender. And so, when you look at this, you see, if you look in the far... Next to the far-right corner, you'll see disparate impact of utilization. And so, you see underutilization for African-Americans, Asian-Americans, Hispanic-Americans, Native-Americans. There were too few in the categories, too smaller a number to make a determination about. You have a total MWE underutilization during the study period. Then, for non-minority females, you see, you show underutilization. And then, total MWE minorities and women, you see underutilization. And so, across the board, you see underutilization, and in the far category, it says less than 80%, it just makes a determination as to whether or not there's a statistically significant underutilization. That's sort of the first step we take in terms of determining whether or not you have a legal basis, is to determine if it's statistically significant. So, in all categories, for prime construction, it was statistically significant for Birmingham during the study period. And of course, you see non-MWEs were overutilized substantially during the study period. Go to the next category, which is another prime construction category. It's going to be architecture and engineering. If we can go to the next slide. So, architecture and engineering, you see some overutilization for African-Americans in that category. Underutilization for Asians, Hispanics. You see total MWB overutilization because there's been a substantial amount of utilization in architecture and engineering during the study period. And then you see underutilization for total MWE during the study period. So, that has an impact on how you structure your narrowly tailored program. If we go to the next slide, which is for professional services. In that category, you see African-Americans were underutilized significantly. Asian-Americans were overutilized in professional services other than A&amp;E. And then, of course, you see not enough sample, not enough instances of Hispanic and Native-Americans winning contracts to measure them. And then, so you see underutilization statistically significant for total MWB and total MWE for the study period. And so, that's prime contracting in professional services. When we look at other services, and other services has category stuff like janitorial services, those kinds of services. When you look at African-Americans in that category, if we go to that next slide, okay, you will see overutilization of African-Americans, very slight overutilization, but overutilization nonetheless. And then you'll see underutilization of Asians, not enough examples of Hispanics and Native-Americans, and then generally, total MWE underutilization, total MBE underutilization, but not statistically significant for total MBE because the African-American number was a little over the parity. Can we go to the next slide? Goods is always a challenge with, in these areas, because there, you know, there's been a lot of consolidation. There used to be a lot of small office supply companies. Everybody buys everything through, you know, big contracts, Staples, that kind of thing. And so, if you look without spending a lot of time on it, not a lot of dollars were spent, and you had underutilization statistically significant in every category for goods. And so, obviously, there's a basis for having some type of program to address local companies that sell goods. And so, if we go to this next chart, it really kind of gives you sort of a summary of the statistically significant underutilization of MWEs and prime contracting for the Birmingham disparity study. And it shows you, you know, the categories where it's, you know, statistically significant by ethnicity and by gender. And that has an impact, obviously, on the type of program that you would then devise. So now, if we can go to this next slide. Next slide is one that I find, you know, interesting because one of the things that the courts have said is that sometimes you see statistically significant underutilization, and yet, it's explainable. And so, one of the things you try to do, and the courts have accepted, the lower courts have accepted, it's never been tried before, the Supreme Court, is to do what's called a regression analysis, where you basically hold constant certain factors. How many years has the person been in business? How old? What's the educational attainment of the business owner? How many employees does the business have? Number of factors that have been known to have an impact on how long businesses survive, how well they do over time. And after conducting this regression analysis, which we have a very detailed breakdown of the regression analysis in the total study, but the summary of it is that it found that disparities by race, ethnicity, or gender status of the firm's owners remain after you control for capacity and other race and gender-neutral factors. And so, that's an important finding. Another finding, which is only one line in what you see here, but it was a lot of our work, are that anecdotal findings support the statistical analysis and the regression analysis. And what that means is this. We conducted detailed, in-depth interviews with business owners across the board, non-minority business owners, minority business owners in every racial, ethnic, and gender category. And then we asked them questions about their experience doing business with the government and what kinds of issues that had occurred with them. And we wrote that up, along with encouraging them to speak at public meetings, to... We conducted focus groups, did surveys, we did a number of different social science methods to try to elicit this information because the courts in Croson, the case I referred to earlier, said that the statistical information needs to be buttressed by anecdotal information that gives some kind of a picture as to what caused any disparities that you might find statistically. And so, we did that, and we found that Birmingham should utilize race and gender-neutral elements and that there is a factual predicate for some race and gender-conscious elements as well. And that means that there are a lot of opportunities to do things to enhance how people do business with the government, enhance the kinds of businesses that do business with the government, move people from the category of being small businesses that had not done business with the government to firms that have done business with the government. And, you know, before I go into these, this, if we go to the next slide, it's going to be on recommendations. Before I go into the recommendations, I would like to say one thing, which is, what we found is that, to the extent that you create these opportunities for businesses, it does create a lot of opportunity for growth because these businesses, all of a sudden, can move from one category to another category in terms of their ability to employ people and their ability to create economic opportunity in communities that have historically been underserved. And so, we have a number of experiences that we've had over the years working with various governments, some of which have been successful, and so, we're making a number of recommendations here. Our first is to, you know, make sure that the... That there's a proper allocation of resources. Obviously, that's a discussion that the administration and the council are going to have, but we're going to make recommendations and have made recommendations, detailed recommendations. We have an executive summary of our findings, but we've also got a more detailed recommendations in our overall report. But we make some recommendations about allocating resources and staffing. We also believe that it's important to set an annual, and we call it an annual aspirational goal based on availability. In other words, based on availability, we believe that you can set goals for every category. Now, the reason we call them aspirational goals is because in the old days, we used to set a goal, say, 25%. If you don't have 25%, you get kicked out. On an aspirational goal, that means it's a little bit different because usually what we do is we come in in the beginning and look at the project and see, is there an opportunity to get, I'm just using this, 5% as an example, 25% participation of minorities and women on this particular project? You might look at it and say, "Well, it is, but there are certain categories or certain parts of it that we can't get." I'm going to give you an example. Our firm was the supplier diversity consultant for the Mercedes-Benz Stadium in Atlanta. Big project, just $1.5 billion project. These stadiums have really gotten to be expensive, as you all know, I'm sure, because you all have built in one. And a lot of it now is IT. Everybody wants to be able to, what? Tweet, send video, "Hey, I'm at the game," you know? And that's expensive. So, the Falcons, the Atlanta Falcons, had an arrangement with IBM to be a sponsor, and IBM agreed to put in all the fiber optic. So, we had to take that out of the one, so that was $250 million. They just came off the top of the $1.5 billion. Then, because of the way the design was, there was no steel manufacturer in the United States that could produce the beams. That had to be shipped from Norway. So, we excluded that. That was another $250 million. And so, when we ended up, we ended up with a top-line number of $989 million. Once we came up with that top-line number of $989 million, then we got 36% participation of the $989 million. So, I'm using that as an example because that's how this aspirational goal thing works. You really want to look at every procurement and make a determination as to what's available, what needs to be excluded, and then say, "Hey, what is, you know, what's my base?" You know? And then, after you do that, then you can make a determination as to what you need. The second part of that is, you also have to have some waiver provisions and other kinds of things. You can't just kick people out because they don't come up with the participation if they can give you legitimate, good-faith reasons for not coming up with it. Now, that's another reason you have to allocate resources because these are individual, particularized determinations that require staffing to review and to deal with that whole contract administration phase of things. But we're making this recommendation that there be annual aspirational goals, and that bleeds into the third one, which is that we recommend setting contract-by-contract subcontracting goals. So, we recommend that there be a very narrowly tailored process by which, when you have a procurement, you look at it and say, "Hey, what is realistic based on what we're looking at in our marketplace, based on who is certified?" Now, that doesn't mean that you haven't already done these other things. You've done outreach, you've done financial assistance, bonding assistance, technical assistance, you've got a pool. But once you have that pool, you might make a determination. On this particular project, because of the nature of it, we can't reach 25%. We can only do 20% on this particular project. So, that's what this contract-by-contract subcontracting goal is. When we say robust contract compliance, what we're really talking about is being aggressive, and that feeds back into number one, allocation of resources. Being aggressive about doing all those things we talked about. We believe that there are a lot of steps that you have to take. One is forecasting. Identify projects as soon as they hit the budget and you approve the budget. Your office that's responsible for administering this program ought to know what those projects are and ought to be out there doing outreach to the business community, saying, "These opportunities are going to be coming up in next year's budget. Prepare yourself for these opportunities. Go sit down with your banker and get position, get your financing in place for this particular opportunity." There ought to be regular sessions where prime contractors are introduced to subcontractors so that people just don't say, "Well, I got to go any meeny miny moe on a list of firms that are coming off the internet. Let's introduce people now, knowing that these projects are coming up." So, robust contract compliance is sort of a comprehensive process that we like to call, you know, the science of compliance. And then, we're recommending that, you know, of course, BCIA, you know, that whole thing is a little convoluted. We just recommended that whole way that it is structured be evaluated so that it all fits together seamlessly. And if you'll allow me, Madam President, and members of the council, I'm just going to give you an example with another client of ours, the city of Memphis, Tennessee, which is, you know, very close by, similar-sized city. They had, oh, boy, Tennessee Small Minority Business Center, okay? And they were funding bonding assistance, financial assistance, technical assistance, a whole bunch of different things, but they had no control over it. And so, when we did their last disparity study, we recommended that they consolidate all of these dollars that they were giving out as grant funds to these independent providers and bring them in-house so that they could control the bonding, the financial, technical assistance provision, and have them report directly to the city as opposed to the way they were doing it. And it allowed them to have a lot more control over that whole front end of the process for what we call supportive services, technical assistance, bonding assistance, financial assistance. Those are the kinds of recommendations that we generally are making here. And of course, we're recommending a lot more outreach, and we're recommending data maintenance reform. Obviously, the better you keep your data, the easier it is to make sure that your program is narrowly tailored. And so, if we can go to that next slide? I think you got one more. I think you had two slides recommended. Right. Next steps to implementation, just want to talk about these real quick. Got two more slides, and I'm through. So, a lot of times, governments, you know, want to know, "Okay, how can we go from here?" And one of the things that I've personally experienced is that sometimes you do a disparity study, and then the question becomes, "Okay, what's next?" You know, "How do we move from here to the next level?" And so, our recommendations are that you, number one, accept the disparity study report and its recommendations. Then, there needs to be a gap analysis. What do you have under your current laws and what new authorization might be needed from council? Okay? And then, internally, the administration needs to make some determinations about aspirational goals. It's in the study. Then, there needs to be a draft of a new program. There's no, and I'm just going to read what I have here. "There is no one process for developing a remedial program. Griffin &amp; Strong will work with the city of Birmingham to create narrowly tailored remedies and processes, and elements of the program will be included in the implementation phase." Now, all that means is this. You're always going through, we've worked with a number of cities, number of counties, number of other governments. We're working with Bear County, Texas, right now, and we've got it passed by their county commission, a new program. After we got the new program passed, people in procurement were like, "Well, before you passed it, we, I know you sent it to us to review, but we really didn't have a chance to look at it, and we've got problems with this, this, and this, and this." And we've been helping them draft new regulations, you know, about how it will be implemented. We're prepared to go down into the, you know, very detailed aspects of what has to be done to help you come up with something that's going to be effective. Because our commitment as a firm is not just to produce a study for you, but to give you something that, at the end of the day, you can walk away with and say, "This is our new program. This is how it's administered. This is how we, as elected officials, monitor whether or not staff is performing as we would expect them to." whether or not staff is performing as we would expect them to, based on the legislation that we passed. And so, that's our commitment to you. And of course, our council, along with the administration, the administration will make a recommendation, you'll make a determination as to whether or not that's, you know, adequate or inadequate, or can be done, budgetarily determine the budget and staffing needs for the new program elements, and then, of course, developing a training protocol to train staff. And, you know, final little aside, we drafted a program for the city of Cincinnati, 1999, 2000, I guess it was, so, talking about 21, 22 years. And I thought, this is a very elegant program. And a year later, a lot of light had happened. And what we came to realize was that, you know, you have to have some training for the staff, because you put it in place in ordinance, the ordinance says you're going to do these new things, but people have been trained to do their job a certain way. And if you don't retrain them and do some change management, you will never get the results you're looking for from the ordinance. And so, one of the things we've always put in place is some type of a recommendation that there be some training and change management so that staff is brought up to speed to understand how this new ordinance with its new requirements works in the real world. Because staff is looking to say, how do I actually do the things that I have to do? They're not looking to interpret the legal language that we drafted to make sure that we're in compliance with the Supreme Court of the United States. So, these are the next steps. And then, finally, this last slide, if we just go to that last slide, you're already on it. So, you know, I like to summarize contract compliance as being pretty simple. There are really five things that I think are critical to any effective contract compliance program. You have to have an assessment of availability and capacity for specific scopes of work. There has to be some outreach. So, Birmingham should focus on outreach to minority and women-owned businesses to participate at the prime and subcontract level and alert them to the new developments. City of Chicago, who we've worked with, has a really good program, because every quarter, they issue everything that's coming up in the next year. So, it's a rolling process where they have a rollout of all the projects they're expecting to do, you know, a year from that point. But that helps MWEs immeasurably in terms of getting prepared to compete. And then, of course, there has to be a certification verification program. Birmingham should continue to encourage and assist firms in getting certified through state and local agencies, and should accept certifications from all bona fide agencies as well as BCIA. And then, in procurement, one of the things that often happens is, there's always some tension between whoever's doing contract compliance, whoever's doing procurement. And one of the things we always recommend is that the solicitations packages include commitments, that there be, in the solicitation package, a section that talks about what the requirements are, what the ordinance requires, that the contract compliance staff, whatever you decide to call them, whether it's contract compliance or EEO, whatever you call them, or EBO, that they be present in the procurement pre-bid conferences so that they can brief the prospective bidders on the requirements. And then, finally, we think it's essential that there be close monitoring of vendor performance and an efficient closeout of projects. You know, sometimes you get, you have these projects where you have prime contractors who come in and say, yeah, we're committed to your program, we're committed to doing all these things, but you have all these problems with them over the project. But then, everybody kind of knows that in City Hall, yeah, we had a lot of problems with XYZ contractor, but nobody documents that. And so, one of the things we're recommending that be done is that the monitoring and compliance be documented so that vendor performance can be tracked. And also, of course, we want to ensure that MWEs are compensated in a timely manner at the subcontract level. And that means it's very important to track all the subcontractors. That doesn't mean, one of the things that, you know, lawyers for the city are going to tell you, and every municipal attorney will tell you, is you do not wish to create any privety of contract with your subcontractors. You don't want to be in a position where you're telling the prime contractor, you've got to do this, and you've got to do that in your relationship with the subcontractor, because therefore, all of the subcontractor's liability falls on you as opposed to on the prime contractor. So, we're not suggesting that. But what we are saying is, that there should be requirements in the ordinance that should say, you got to pay people when you get paid. You have got to be prompt payment provisions. You can't get the money from the city, sit on the money, keep it in the bank, not pay folk, and then, you know, you got to monitor that process. So, we're not saying create a privety of contract with your subcontractors, but we are saying, create a robust process for ensuring that the prime contractors are fairly treating the subcontractors. And that, of course, has to be carefully done, but of course, we'll make recommendations for that, and of course, between the ordinance and any kind of implementing regulations that might be put in place and approved, either whether internally by the administration or that has to come back before council, depending on how your particular charter is drafted with regard to those things, we will work with your team to help you figure that out. And so, I want to close by saying, this has been an exciting project for me, particularly because I've had the opportunity, as I've said over the years, to consult, when I was in city government in Atlanta, to consult with the leaders in Birmingham government and the airport many, many times. And because I know that Birmingham is a city that has a lot of opportunity that is on the horizon, and I believe that if a carefully crafted program is put in place, that a difference can be made, and I think that this work lays the groundwork, the foundation for that. I hope I didn't take too long. I want to thank each and every one of you for listening to me, and of course, I'm open for questions for as long as you all want to bear with me to let me try to answer.
Thank you very much. We do appreciate hearing the report, Mr. Strong, and of course, your expertise and the work that you've done with other cities. I know this has been very beneficial to us as a part of this process. Would I allow, at this time, is for counselors to ask any questions or any updates, because I know we'll want to also talk with administration and just see what these next steps and how these would be applied. So, counselors, do you have any questions or comments? Mrs. Abbott?
Well, I have the microphone over here. I was, first, thank you for being here. Sorry about the traffic. I know that gives you, you know, ulcers when you're out there in the traffic and people are sitting here tapping their toes. But, my question, and I realize that we've been given the entire study, and I couldn't get it to open, so I haven't read it yet. Can you tell me the difference between A&E and professional services?
In some studies, we call A&E construction-related professional services. But the difference is that A&E is a professional service. Architecture and engineering is a professional service, but it's so closely tied to the construction industry, along with program management services, which is another professional service that often is applied, along with, you know, soil testing, which is, so sometimes we broaden the category and even include some additional categories as construction-related professional services. Other professional services are going to be things like accounting services. There'll be where you, executive search firms. There'll be where you have, in some instances, law firms, although generally, the law firms are not going to be procured in the same way. In most states, you know, the city attorney or corporation counsel or attorney general, whoever's designated, can hire lawyers without that same process. But generally, any type of professional service that's not construction or A&E related, either A&E or some of the ancillary, you know, services that are subs to A&E, are going to be in the professional services category. In our study, we break down each contract. So, I can give you a breakdown of every contract, but it's mostly going to be accounting services, executive, you know, executive search services, that kind of thing.
Okay, and so then, that comes to other services. So, is other services just not all the services you've already mentioned?
Yeah, sometimes you call those general services. But those will be usually janitorial services, you usually have maintenance services on your buildings, you know, you usually have, sometimes you have ongoing maintenance contracts for, you know, somebody to come in on your building to maintain the buildings, and they'll have MEP, mechanically, electrical, plumbing requirements on the building, and those will be services that they will provide their construction, but they're not really providing construction, they're usually, you know, providing that as part of a maintenance contract. Usually, you'll have landscaping services that fall in that category. Some of those can be pretty big contracts. I know that, you know, especially, I know you all don't directly manage your airport. I think the airport is a separate entity for Birmingham, if I recall correctly. But some cities directly manage the airport, and those are usually huge contracts, you know, you have a large, you know, area that has to have landscape services, but those are still a decent sized contracts. And so, it's generally things like that.
Okay, and last question, goods. Okay, the city, we use all the pens and pencils and paper, and, you know, we just chug that stuff out. But when we bid, the big guys who have the buying power are the ones who always win the bid because they have the best prices. So, my question is, how in the goods procurement can we do anything when, you know, we obviously want the low bidder, because we don't want the citizens to be paying extra money for this program? So, how can you do anything about the procurement of goods?
Right. What we found is that goods are, they're the hardest area to get participation in. It used to be easier, because there was a lot more, it was more diffuse in terms of certain sort of goods, such as, you know, office supplies and that kind of thing. But what we found is that there are companies that are suppliers, that are in the business of supplying, and they generally are able to have a relationship with manufacturers for certain types of goods. So, for instance, one major city that we're working in, a certified minority supplier was able to get a relationship with a supplier of chemicals for the water treatment plant. That particular city runs their own line. And they were able to win that bid in a competitive situation. And so, there are suppliers, if it's encouraged, there's usually some participation that can be had there, although that's probably the most difficult area to get participation.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mrs. Abbott. Any other questions? Yes, sir. Counselor Woods?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Strong, appreciate the work you all have done, had a chance to see some of the other projects you did in other cities as well, and so, definitely appreciate. Just had a couple of questions, don't want to go too deep into the weeds, but a couple of things I saw in y'all's report that was interesting. One was, you did some work around like bank loan denials that you saw, just in, I guess in that same footprint. And so, I was trying to get some insight on just kind of what, how to read that chart. Like, I'm pretty far removed from statistics class.
Yeah, Dr. Price, who is an economist, did that. And one of the reasons we do that analysis is because there was a case called City and County of Denver, Colorado. And in that case, he found, they had a very robust program, and he had overutilization in a number of categories, but they continued to keep the program in place, and they were ultimately sued. And the court upheld their program because they were able to show that in the private sector, there were still barriers to minority and women participation. So, one of the things we always do is do what we call a private sector analysis. So, we're looking at, okay, how hard is it for a minority firm to get a bank loan? And are the denial rates normal? If you normalize that based on a regression analysis, and so, that's why I had those statistics in there, because he ran a regression analysis, Dr. Price did. The other piece of that is, that they look at rates of self-employment using public use microsample data. And the reason that they do that is because, if you assume that the marketplace is an equal marketplace, and everybody has an equal opportunity to compete, then you would assume that people, regardless of race, gender, ethnicity, would, you know, go into self-employment at rates that were somewhat commensurate with one another. And so, when you see a large imbalance there, that indicates that there may be some problems in the marketplace. So, that's why you saw that chart that looked at those self-employment statistics.
Okay, and then, can we talk a little bit about, this is back to your presentation today, specifically like the disparity index, and kind of how that, you know, relates to actually setting a percentage goal?
Yeah. So, the number that's really important, I think, for setting goals is availability. And what we're doing is, we're looking at, okay, when you look at all the bidders that are out there in the marketplace, that are available to the city of Birmingham, and then, you look at how, what percentage of those are minorities in various ethnicity and gender categories, and that sort of becomes a baseline for setting your goals. The federal government has a goal-setting process under 49 CFR, Part 32, you're probably familiar with that, under DBE program. That really came from the work we were doing in, because Pena came out, Adirant versus Pena, came out six years later, and they had a lot of meetings with us about how we did goal-setting for state and local governments. And so, they kind of codified it, and it gives you a good snapshot for how you do that, but you take the availability and then you kind of weight that based on the various categories to come up with some goals. Now, with the disparity index, what you're doing is, you're trying to determine, all things being even, if you look in a particular category, would you expect minorities to have X percentage? So, you compare the availability number with the utilization number. And we use an index based on 100, okay? So, if 100 is parity, are you over 100 or are you under 100 in terms of, you know, your participation levels? So, you take your utilization, compare it with your availability, and that gives you your disparity index. So, the disparity index is a calculation between your availability and your utilization, all of which is based on the relevant market, only firms that are based inside Jefferson County and Shelby County.
Okay, so like, if you're like, you know, setting a goal, I know you talked about kind of doing a little bit different, almost setting a protocol to do it on a case-by-case or contract-by-contract basis, which I think is probably more efficient, but, you know, if we were just generally, is there a cap at what you, you know, based on, you know, what you found in the disparity study, like a cap on like what you can set your percentage at for your goals, and like, what is that tied to?
I think it ties to your availability. You would never set a goal higher than your availability.
Right.
So, you know, you wouldn't say, if you showing 20% minority businesses are available in the marketplace, you set a goal for 30%, obviously, you're not going to reach that goal, that's your, you know, now you could, but then you show overutilization in doing that. So, you're usually looking at a goal as somewhere in line with your availability. What you're trying to reach or achieve is some level of parity.
Right. Are there like any other constraints outside of availability when it comes to?
I think there are, because, you know, as I mentioned earlier, you have certain exclusions on a particular project. And those exclusions are things that you just cannot compete. You know, some of it is going to be your, you know, certain, the installation of all your utilities. There might be something where only Alabama Power can do certain kinds of things, you know. I used two examples earlier from the Mercedes-Benz Stadium, because they were just pretty raffled, you know, half million dollar, half billion dollars worth of exclusions, that's a lot of exclusion. But they were legitimate, because there was really no opportunity to compete that way.
All right, well, like I said, I appreciate you being here. Definitely look forward to kind of getting all the way through the report, and then having some conversations around, you know, how do we get personnel in place to kind of, because one of the things I did, get to talk to like the, some of the people in Memphis that actually worked on the implementation side of what you recommended there. in Memphis that actually worked on the implementation side of what you recommended there. And, you know, it was just, they got a really good team there, and they, they really, similar to us, they, they implemented off the second time they did the disparity study. So they did one, they let it sit, they did another one, and then they implemented that one. But, you know, I think this is the, I know you did a lot of hard work, but this is probably the bigger piece is actually, you know, making sure we have a good plan to take it to the next step. Because like I said, it doesn't, we don't get it to improve or impact, and seeing so many amazing projects happen in our city, we're always breaking ground on something or another. So I think, you know, working to kind of get these things implemented can be very significant. And so I know we'll be having a lot more, a lot more conversation about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Williams, did you have anything?
Thank you, Madam President. And thank you for being here. Like was mentioned earlier, there's nothing more frustrating than running late when there's traffic. I know I've been in your shoes many a time, and actually was in your shoes today, but you were just a little bit later than I was. I got saved, I got saved by your traffic. You mentioned the BCIA. What is, what is your recommendation on how we shape our relationship with the BCIA and what you're, and what we're talking about here today? And what changes do you think? Or I, I don't know, or maybe we haven't gotten that deep, but what's your recommendation on how we treat our relationship with BCIA?
Well, I, I can tell you my general principles. My general principles are that the government itself ought to be in control of the process, the whole process. And BCIA ought to be something that provides services for the government's process that you're in control of. That would require some changes to the way things have been. And I just think it's just a lot of authority at the BCIA, the BCIA that probably needs to be brought back in-house. Not saying that you need to necessarily cut back on everything that they do, and obviously there's a relationship there. But I think it needs to be a negotiation, you know, to find the happy medium there, if that makes any sense.
Okay. And then so would it be fair to say that, that it's probably more prudent to have, you know, based on earlier comments, you have, you know, set goals for your contractors or vendors or whoever it might be? And in terms of minority participation, and let them achieve those goals, let them report up and kind of take some of that from the, I guess it's kind of a weird route we have with BCIA? Is that fair?
Yeah, that's what we're going to recommend.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
That's what we're going to recommend. And, and it means that you'll have sort of an overall goal. We, we think we ought to be able to achieve X percentage based on the availability that we came up with in the disparity study. And then we're going to recommend, you know, there'd be some, look at each project that's coming out. Now, what my experience is, and I know it always sounds like it's going to be really onerous to do this project-by-project goal-setting, but when I was Director of Contract Compliance at the City of Atlanta, our contract administrator was able to go through, kind of look at the trades. It was a pretty easy thing on a particular project to look at the trades and say, okay, what is availability in these various trade areas? How you add this up? I don't think we can get to participation here, make a recommendation, write a quick, you know, paragraph, do a memo. It's usually, you know, most cities, you're only going to put 10, 15, you know, bids out on the street, or RFPs out on the street at a particular month. Then we would have a meeting, Chief Procurement Officer, Contract Compliance Officer, Deputy City Attorney. We'd make a determination as to whether or not we'd approve the staff recommendation or make some modifications to it. It was, it was out, you know? Now, staff time is a little bit more than that, you know, but at the, at the higher levels, it, it can be done relatively quickly.
So i- in that scenario, sorry, you've created another question.
Okay.
In that, in that scenario, does that mean that you're, you're specifically recommending vendors or contractors?
No.
Okay.
What that means is that instead of having, just having an overall goal of say 25%, you would look at a particular procurement and make a determination as to whether or not you have certain exclusions.
Gotcha.
Certain other kinds of things. So it might be 20% on that particular project. Or it might be 30% on that particular project because of the way that particular project is configured.
I got you. So at no point would the city ever have any sort of recommendation for a specific vendor or list of vendors, right?
Well, what you'd want is, in my opinion, you really want to have firms that are certified, because you want to determine that they're legitimate. You want to know that they really are owned by and controlled by minority women. So on that side, you want to know that. Now, I believe that there ought to be some type of a general vendor registration. It makes it easier where everybody who does business is already registered, so that you have a pool of registered vendors, and you can't do business unless you're registered. I don't necessarily think for a city you need to have necessarily a pre-qualified list. A lot of Departments of Transportation use what they call a pre-qualification process. We did the disparity study for both the Georgia Department of Transportation and the North Carolina Department of Transportation recently. Both of them have pre-qualified lists for certain types of work. But of course you understand, they're talking about roads and bridges, and they want to make sure that firms have some expertise. And so, you know, that's something that could be considered, but I wouldn't necessarily recommend that.
Yeah. One thing that just always rubs me the wrong way, which we had a utility do it here in Birmingham, is send a list of vendors that they have pre-approved that you can use. And it, it's, it's just a little icky having that. So anyway, thank you for clarifying that.
Well, that's exactly what I'm talking about. When you say a list of pre-approved vendors, pre-qualified listings is exactly that. And you send, you tend to see it with Departments of Transportation, and you tend to see it with utilities. We're doing some work right now with ComEd, which is the utility that runs all the electricity in Chicago. And they have a pre-qualified process. And the idea is, how do you get more minority women businesses able to become pre-qualified?
Yeah.
Right? But for a city government, you usually are not dealing with that kind of specialized type of construction where somebody has to, you have to demonstrate a certain level of expertise to even bid, you know? Which is what it tends to be with DOTs and with.
The ALDA issue, yeah. All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate you being here.
Thank you very much. Thank you again. And I know.
When you're finished.
That's okay. Thank you. I do want to just say for the record, we know that this is a condensed version of, I think it was a 255-page document. And so I know councilors may want to dive into it a little deeper just to see, but I thank you for the next steps for implementation. So before I go to any questions or comments about that, I'll allow you, Ms. Abbott, to ask your next question, your question or comment you may have. Go ahead.
Okay, yeah. I thought of another couple of questions. The first one's really easy. The last column on your little chart, less than 80%, less than 80% of what?
Yeah, that, that just, it just determines whether or not the disparity is statistically significant. Okay? It's just a, we're making a determination, just a baseline determination as to whether or not it's statistically significant or not. And so if, if, if it's over 80%, if it's 80% or more, we consider that a statistically significant. If you were basically, call it a t-test, a statistical significance t-test. And that's sort of like the first line of what we look at before we run a regression analysis.
Okay. Then usually MWBE also has that little slash in the DV, the Disabled Veterans. Are disabled veterans included in this, or is this just minority and women-owned businesses?
Um, I believe that we, I, I don't recall whether we looked at disabled veterans as a separate category. Did we, Corey?
I don't think, you know, I think the part of what we looked at was disadvantaged persons.
Yeah.
Disabled veterans were not included.
And then could we have a preference in whatever program is formulated? Could we have a preference for city of Birmingham firms as opposed to just any old firms? I mean, I, I'm a little bit selfish. I want Birmingham firms to win all the bids. And, and so could we have a, a preference for our own?
Yes, generally, the answer is generally yes. Court does not scrutinize local preferences in rigor, that they scrutinize preferences based on race, certainly based on race. And I say, vendor sometimes is looked at.
Based on a lower level of scrutiny.
Always race is the highest level of scrutiny since the basis I referenced, strict scrutiny. But it's just a rational basis test on the basis of, you have to show that there's a, you know, a rational basis for imposing a requirement on your, that firms be locally based. Now, you can't run a file with Commerce Corps, so you have to do some basic findings, but it's really not hard to, to put a local preference.
Good, thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. You brought up a great point. I know we have a lot of construction, I mean, we're breaking ground daily, and some huge projects that are going on in our community. And I know comments have been made before, when we see these new buildings going up or we see these new projects going up, and most of the cars for most of the workers are from out-of-town workers, where it appears that the company may not even be a Birmingham company. And so I would like to see, you know, how this study could impact something like that as far as our preferences for how we dole out those contracts and those bids, so.
And usually you can put a small business preference in.
Okay.
For local small businesses. And that usually doesn't require a lot of, it, it's not going to be hard for us to put something like that in that would require a lot of data. You know, we have a lot of data already in the study that should be enough to support some type of a local preference, if that was what, you know, the council would decide. Also, any kind of preference related to minority women-owned businesses will certainly only apply to those that are in the relevant market. So basically, they got to base in Jefferson County, Shelby.
Thank you. Again, we thank you for this study. And when we talk about next steps, I know one of the first things you said, you listed here is to accept the disparity study report and its recommendations. So Chief Mitchell, I just want to know, what is the expectation from administration? Does the council need to accept this report for, to move forward? Or would that be coming from the administration?
Well, usually the, I, I think the, the next steps is for the council to accept the recommendation for the administration to implement the recommendation that the councils approve. So I know a lot of the things that we discuss are some things that we already have in the queue. I think, I think BCIA was brought up. I know we're in a 1989 dissent decree, I mean, that was the creation of the Birmingham Plan and the BCIA. So I think that's another overarching conversation that we have to have to see, you know, what their line on this disparity study goes to. Just, I guess to, more to your point again, is just, we just need to have the council accept the recommendation that we move forward, trying to implement them, and updating the council on our, you know, how we implement those recommendations. Because a lot of the contracts that we do, especially with a lot of projects, of course we're bound by the Alabama State Bid Law. So we try to put a lot of language in it to encourage minority participation with MDBs, MDBs, and MDEs. So I think it's just one of those things that we just need to just work together and find a common solution, just to try and get minority participation over the city.
Okay. And I know the question was asked about any counts that we did for disabled veterans. And I believe the answer was, I just want to be sure I'm clear, that number is, kind of falls up into this category, is it such a small number or is something, we don't capture anyway? I just wanted to be clear on that.
Yeah, I think it's a combination of two. We don't capture a demographic data like that, and then we don't have a lot of certified bodies that in the state, for the relevant market. So that, that's why it's smaller, that's why you're, BCIA. So, I mean, but once we sort of put some remedy in place, that could increase because people see that it's effective, but it was not a certified body in the state.
Okay. Sabat, yes, that's okay.
All right. Okay. Have, do you know of any cities in Alabama? You know, this is Alabama. Are there any cities in Alabama that have any kind of program, disparity program that tries to level the playing field for anybody?
Uh, I know that they have a, they have a race neutral, or not a, not a full-fledged pro place in Mobile, I have some discussion with them. But that's only other city.
So do you foresee any difficulties in us? You know, every time the city of Birmingham seems to do something unique and different, we see a law passed in Montgomery to, you know, hamstring us. So I know you're not from Alabama, but I'm sure you've heard about us.
Yeah, well, I'm from Georgia and originally.
Oh, well, yeah, Georgia's pretty close to Alabama.
So I'm very familiar with politics.
Yeah, it's the rice to the bottom.
Yeah. And three of your, three of your, several of your specific cities involve Georgia and Tennessee are aligned. And there has been some concern about something coming out of the legislature. And at one point, there was something that was introduced in the Georgia legislation years ago, it was open to review, you know, did it go through? You know, I can't predict, but what we're going to do is, and I just really want to emphasize this, what we're recommending is something that is going to be very, very, very conservative in terms of constitutional law. So they're going to have to draft something that's going to be very specific. And it's going to, we're going to make it very hard to have, because what we're trying to do is ensure that there is an opportunity for everybody to compete, create an equal business opportunity. And we're going to do it based on the latest, you know, legal analysis, what the courts have said, the most recent court opinions in the level circuit. And so we're going to be really careful. And hopefully we won't provide, this won't be a lightning rod for anything, because I don't think it will be controversial. Hopefully we can do something that, you know, that can be bipartisan, and that it can get support across.
Good, well, that's a relief, and thank you.
Thank you. Counselors, at this time, do you feel a readiness that we can accept the recommendations or the next steps for implementation as part of approving this? Would you like to go back and look at this a little bit more?
I was going, I was going to suggest to give you time to read.
Okay, perfect.
Even if we have to have another meeting discussed to.
That will work.
To level, level set the recommendations.
Okay.
It's okay. Cool.
So can we put a timeframe on it then?
We've got movement of the full council's power.
No, we would prefer that the council vetted and.
The council?
To, like, give you time to look up the document.
Okay, sure.
I mean, it's a very robust document.
All right. Well, at this time, then we won't make any action as far as recommendation. We'll just set some timeframes and work with the administration. And I'll talk with each counselor after you've reviewed this, and then we'll have some idea.
Administration will have some.
And they probably need time to look at it as well. I guess that's what I want to find out from you, from administration and Mr. Hauser. Chief, if you'll just let us know what your anticipated next steps were as far as looking at these implementation steps.
For a lot of it, Chief Mitchell, but part of what I want to make sure we heard today as well is that they did, the team did look at the consent decree, they looked at the other disparity study. And they spent about a year and a half talking to our capital projects team, procurement team. So they've had the discussions with everybody in City Hall about the state bid law and how we've done it. So they, they have a lot of that information in the larger disparities that you'll see. I think for our expectations on next steps, as ready, as ready, as the council is ready to move, you know, we have been able to sort of breathe through it. Monique, who's back there, my partner in crime with this, we've sat with it for a year and a half. And so we, we've been able to sort of follow this through with the team. And so as soon as the council is ready to move on some of these recommendations, I think we are in the same place to move as well.
Let's just go ahead, and we could give you an opportunity to review the document further. And then if we could just maybe give some type of indication within the next two weeks, would that be good? To administration of what?
Yeah, that, that'll be perfectly fine. If you can qualify all your questions in one document, we can get the IEO team and the consultant together to answer any questions that we may have outstanding. We just want to make the council as comfortable as possible.
All right. Thank you. And what we'll do, we'll agree right now that any of those questions, we'll funnel those to council administration, his kid, or Deputy Administrator McDaniel's. If we could send those directly to them, and then they'll codify those and put those together for us. And would two, three weeks be that good time? So we say within the next three weeks, whatever that date is. Yeah, because we're now, we're also looking at the budget. So three weeks, and then we'll get that information in. That'll be our timeline to get that into. to get that into our administrative team, and then we'll get that back out. Yes. All right. All right, counselors. Well, we thank you again. We appreciate you. Any other questions, any older, new business?
Madam President?
Yes.
At the last meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
I asked that recycling be included at our next committee of the hall, and, you know, obviously, we couldn't do that today because we're, you know, but can we get the recycling issue?
We actually had that on the agenda, and the only reason that it was not presented is that Mr. Yates is out of town, the director of DPW, and he really wanted to bring that information to us personally, so we've moved that to the next agenda. But it was on our agenda, but just unfortunate that he was out of town. So, they were planning and preparing to bring that to this meeting.
That's correct. He's at a Public Works Symposium. He's a guest speaker, so he can take the time to leave that symposium to come to this committee meeting, but he sends his regrets.
Perfect. So, Mr. Brown, if you will note that that is, we do want to be sure we keep that continued on the next agenda, okay? Yes, ma'am.
And Chief, can we send it to PIC first? Please.
All right. Madam Proton.
I'm at your beck and call, so whatever you want to do.
Please.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you all. Can I have a call for adjournment if there's no other business? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you all. Ms.?